Thanks, everyone in the audience for showing up. This is a Monday, December 13th at the Clarendon Town Hall, 6:00 PM meeting. We're running just a tad late. So I would like to have the board consider two agenda additions. One would be discussion about the zoning administrator and Cold River Road permit. I'd look for a motion.
Are we looking for that to be an executive session discussion?
We may go into executive session, yes, on it.
Okay.
And then come out.
What's your other ones? I may do them both at once.
And cemetery bids.
I'll make a motion on both of those that we add. Technically, under old business, I'll make a motion that we add the Cold River Birm discussion. And then, under new business, cemetery bids.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Also, I'd ask for a motion with regard to the regular minutes of our meeting, November 22nd.
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there any corrections or deletions, or?
I thought they looked good.
Alright. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Move right on to highway. Road Commissioners Report.
Just an update. The grader just come back from, had problem with the brakes. Had to tear it all apart. It was quite extensive project, so that's back on the road. And we actually graded it. Used grader today. Pardon me? Okay. It was quite expensive. That's about all I have. We've had some light storms. Those light storms are pretty expensive storms. You're better off to have a lot of snow than the ice and stuff that we've had. Our salt usage, we've... Has not been as bad as it has been in the past.
What are you hearing? I know we had some discussion around salt supply. Are we gonna have any issue getting it, you think?
So far, it's coming out of careers, and the careers have delivered it locally. So that was kind of a good thing.
As long as they're able to get it?
Yes. As long as the rural cars keep coming to fill their bins.
Okay.
I was quite happy to see that. It stayed local, local. So we're actually, actually, one of the truck drivers is a town resident.
Okay.
That's about all I have. Left some basic questions.
Anybody have any questions? Alright. There's an access permit for 63 acre solar.
So this is Tom Garden from Charlamon Partners. Want an access permit on Cash's land, I believe.
Is this the El Fresher? El Fresher Road Project?
I'll withdraw my involvement in this.
I'll make a motion that we, I mean, we've already, this project's been
Yeah.
Coming down the pike for a while, so I'll make a motion that we grant the access permit per the road commissioners' recommendations of what need to be done to make sure that it's up to spec.
Just one quick question. The access will be just beyond the tracks?
350 feet beyond the tracks.
Okay.
So that they'll have turning room.
Yeah, okay.
No, won't be on the, kind of the hill incline of the tracks.
Yeah.
Be a setback.
Okay.
Katie, where is that?
I said I'll be in order of the agenda. So starting from the front, yeah.
Yeah. I haven't signed them either yet. Damn. Anyway, the... It's just I signed it. Okay, there's a motion been made and seconded. We've had brief discussion. All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes. And let the record show, Cash recused himself.
When they supposed to start on that cash?
This spring.
Alright, Select Board warrants are floating and drifting. There are no guests tonight. No public comments. Old Business Transfer Station job opening. Did we get any requests to be on that?
Um, just one moment. I can explain. So Horst Gebauer, his letter of interest is in that folder as well.
Is that the only letter of interest we got?
Yes. I received a phone call from a resident, and I recommended him dropping off a letter of interest. And he said he'd email it to me, and I never got it.
So at this point, have we been posted over the 14 days?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna make a motion. My understanding is Tom-
Well, I posted it the Tuesday after our last meeting, so.
Okay. And this was a three-week stretch, anyway?
Yeah, so we're good.
And Tom, as kind of our head guy over there, has recommended that this person would be good?
I don't believe Tom knows him. I think Joe Turner knew him.
Okay. Do we, I mean, do we have a formal recommendation? Do you know, anybody talked to anybody to know that?
I don't know. I don't even know who.
I don't either.
I guess from what I gathered from Tom, conversation with Tom, you might wanna just ask him to come in, or... Have almost like an interview, or what you want?
That's what I'm wondering. I think we need to, it'd be one thing if we had a formal recommendation from Tom, and that he'd kind of interviewed him. I'd be okay with that, but...
Also partly because, I mean, you need to know too, that the two guys are holding down the four over there, so they're working more than normal.
Right.
And especially now, getting into the holidays.
And is there a way we could actually have this fellow try as a trial, short trial period, and then we talk to Tom? Because they need, they need a little relief, I would think.
I would think so.
They're used to.
Um, so how do you wanna, how do you wanna do that?
You know, I could, I could call Tom right now.
I mean, my, my suggestion would be, if you can set up a meeting, I would be fine, even if it was, I mean, tomorrow's Tuesday. I'd be fine if you and Bob went and had a conversation with this gentleman and Tom present. And, and I would be, I would be fine with that, and I would say, as long as the three of you approve, I would, I would make the motion now that if the three of you meet and, and you approve of this individual, that we go ahead and hire him.
Have Mike and Bob meet with Tom?
Mike and Bob meet, and if, if, as long as everything's all good, no red flags.
Yep.
I, I'm good with it.
Well-
How about after that meeting tomorrow morning, Mike?
Tuesday?
Yeah, because we get that Prescott thing.
Yeah.
At 10, what, 10:15? Or is it 10:30?
It's 10:15.
10:15.
Yeah, we could, we could do that and then-
Figure, figure-
But the problem is, we didn't notify this guy.
I don't think you're gonna run into a problem. It sounds like he's pretty available.
What's his name again?
Gavus.
Horst Gebauer.
Auf Deutsch.
Does he live on-
His number's right there. You could step into the side room and make a phone call and say, can you meet us at the transfer station?
He's in here and always has a positive attitude and-
He's a town resident and lives on East Street now, or no?
But, so I, I will make that a motion. I, as long, if it's tomorrow, or if it's Thursday, whatever, whatever day works for you all, I will make the motion that pending Tom, Mike, and Bob meeting with this individual, and if the three of you are in agreement, I would make the motion to authorize you to hire him.
Can we hire him for a three-month trial period?
90 days? Do a 90, and with a 90-day trial period?
Yeah.
I'll go with that.
Okay.
Do you want me to follow up with the other guy that never got me a letter of interest?
Nope. If he didn't submit a letter of interest, he's, it's, I mean, that's-
So are you seconding that motion? Okay.
I mean, you had, basically, the, the opportunity was there, and I mean, it was pretty clear based on our last meeting that we were only posting it for 14 days anyway, so we're, we were, we're well beyond that.
Alright, there's a motion made, it's seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bob, what I'll do is, after this meeting, I'll give him a call. Tell him that we have a meeting tomorrow. Soon as that meeting is over, I'll call him again. But I'll ask first if he's available at some point tomorrow.
Yeah, 'cause I would say we, we should be done up at Cold River Road, Cold River Road by 11 o'clock. That's gonna be different.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be basically a drive-by.
Yeah.
If they're riding with you, you might not even get out. I mean, I'm telling you the truth. I don't think you've got much on your hands.
This time, a FEMA project?
Huh? The FEMA project. It's basically, all they're doing is they wanna see that it's green space.
Yeah.
They're, they're gonna go up, and they're gonna say, oh, there's no house, and there's no nothing, and it's green space? Perfect. And they're gonna walk away.
Leave me grass and these other-
There's no snow.
That's right.
Perfect.
Okay, so let me get the-
Right, for your motion. Select and community motion that Mike, Bob, and Cash are gonna meet with interested candidate, if there's no-
Mike, Bob, and Tom.
And Tom, not me.
It'd be a good thing I did that.
Thank you.
Um, they're gonna meet with interested candidate, and there's no red flags, then to hire him effective immediately for a 90-day trial?
Yep.
And who seconded that?
Did you all vote on it?
Yes.
Yep. It was a unanimous decision, I think.
Yes, it was.
Okay, moving right along. Overweight vehicle discussion.
So, um, I'm bringing this up because we had talked about, like, mud season and having an ordinance for that, which we found out we don't need. But then I realized, like, the overweight permit thing is separate from mud season. And while Becky was here the last couple of weeks, we were talking about it more, and she kind of recommended that Clarendon start issuing them again. So I reached out to VLCT and the DMV, and DMV came back and said that municipalities are required to issue them for the, I think it's $5 or $10 fee. So I didn't know if you wanted to, like, maybe make that effective again, starting in January, or?
That, the DMV said we are obligated by law to do it?
Yeah, I have it in an email in that folder. Basically, AOT is getting more strict, and if they pull over an overweight truck or whatever, they ask for their permits. And of course, they don't really have any idea if they're going through Clarendon, but Clarendon should be issuing them.
Is that included, like, with something?
So the permit looks like this.
Yeah, I, we did them for a long time.
Yeah. Me and Becky were talking about that. I think the discussion Becky was saying is that the town had dropped doing it because the fee was so small.
Correct.
It didn't seem worth it, but it's kind of a-
And that $10 fee would be per company, not per truck?
It explains it. So there should be a fee structure on the form itself that is issued by the DMV?
Yeah, I put the-
I believe it's $10.
Yeah, it's a $10 a fleet.
It actually came up because Becky is friends with another town clerk treasurer in another town, who happens to own a trucking business. Or be co-owner of a trucking business. So they got to talking about it. So then we got to talking about it in the office, and that's how it came up again.
So basically, any log truck comes into the town building?
Um, this is like for, for anyone. So like, in the past, like, fuel trucks, anyone who has, literally has an overweight vehicle, so...
And you receive them?
Every, yeah, so every year I receive them, and then because we haven't been doing them, we send them back and say that they're not required here. So like, last year, AmeriGas, Born Energy, like, all of those, any kind of-
Cash from this point.
Trucking company, everyone calling is required of them. But Katie very clearly got an email back today, said in Vermont, municipal permits are required. So I don't particularly really have an option.
So I'll make a motion that we begin issuing overweight permits again, per state statute, January 1st.
And do we still wanna keep the municipal permit fee at $5?
Well, it's state-set. I don't think we can change it.
I thought, you said 10, right?
10 for a fleet.
A 10 for a fleet.
Can't, I mean, you can't change the, unfortunately, you can't change price.
Right.
No.
Alright, and-
Who's gonna do all that legwork?
Goes to the admin.
That's alright, Tom. I just wanna clarify.
And looks like, uh, just the chair signs it. I'm looking at this currently.
Well, that's-
We'll have to put that on the next agenda.
That'll have to go on the next agenda to be warned.
So this is just your copy, just to show us?
This is my original copy.
Okay. Which can feel, hers can feel-
Katie and I will work on-
Get it over there.
...the permit and how that's gonna work.
Give you something to do in your lunch hour.
I just, I think Becky made it, you know, it could be a liability issue if we don't give them out, so.
Mm-hmm.
We wanna be in compliance.
Alright, so the motion made was seconded. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask who seconded that.
Cash did, didn't he? I made it.
Yeah.
Didn't Cash second it?
I think Cash seconded it.
Yes.
He's not, he wasn't saying anything. I wondered if-
Spelled here.
Thought he did.
He's checking on his budget.
No, I'm looking at the community center. I think they only got 20 gallons, 8.5 gallons of fuel.
Some of the heat pumps.
Heat pumps.
Heat pump.
I know, that's why I was-
I have to look into that for down here.
And it's been warned.
Yeah. Alright, uh, the Cold River Birm discussion.
Well, you got hazard mitigation first.
Uh... Jesus Christ. Very hazardous mitigation adoption. We have it right in front of me here, and I didn't even-
Are we confident that it is what we've asked it to be?
There's, but, as far as I know, there's been nothing changed since we sent it in last time.
Okay. So based on that, we're pleased.
Alright, so is there a motion for a select board chair to sign this?
Don't everybody jump at once?
I haven't seen it to, to know.
Well, I'm gonna get motion there. We go ahead and- Alright. Got this for the- Has been corrected? Has corrected, yes. Yeah. Is there a second to that motion?
I did share the review.
Cool with you. Stephanie wanted me to pass it along for you guys to look at. I had also emailed that out.
Now, what were you looking at? Oh, okay. Not just from here.
Mitigation. Look on mitigation.
I'll second it.
Alright, any further discussion?
It looks like the revisions of the last ones we asked for were made.
It looks like it's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And I will sign this. Looks like you have to have the town clerk test it this, too.
Yeah. I don't know if that's-
Would you do that tomorrow and stamp it?
Yeah, she'll stamp it.
Alright, now for the Cold River Birm.
So I've read the emails, so can we have just a brief discussion and determine if we need to go into executive session or not?
Um, have you been brought up to speed with it?
No, I haven't been up to speed on this. This apparently just came up.
So if my, if my reading is correct, and I know Mike has had conversations, he can fill in the holes, but based on my understanding of the reading, there has been an issue between the zoning administrator and the BZA, the, the zoning board.
Yeah.
And right, wrong, or indifferent, or whoever's to blame for it, my reading understanding was, the board technically passed approval for this. There seems to be a disagreement about if that approval was ever given in writing to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator is saying it has not been.
Yep.
And now we are at a critical breaking point, because the state is saying, if we don't have written approval of the permit, they're pulling the plug.
That's correct.
So what we need as a board tonight, sitting here, is whoever egos aside, whoever, whoever is holding the works up here, it sounds like it was voted on in the zoning level.
And it passed.
And it passed, so that needs to be written immediately and given.
And now, I haven't said that. Before I left here today, Bronson came in.
Okay.
And he and I had a long discussion about this.
Okay.
And, um, he is, there's two things he brought up. One, uh, he said that he notified, whether it was via email, or however, to Jeff that it passed unanimously.
Okay.
Then, uh, we had Gail Akazi come in, and she also verified that, um, two things. One, that she mentioned to Bronson, he has to send a letter, uh, showing that the board approved this. The vote. When Bronson was here, I said, regardless of what's going on, get a letter into us. He said that he would try and get a letter into us by tomorrow that goes to Jeff, saying that it was approved. However, it was pointed out from Shannon and also Gail, correct me if I'm wrong, that there is a 45-day limit. Once that limit's over, then Jeff could still send a permit.
Okay.
Jeff understands that, but he's not sure, he wanted us to call Bill Blumer to check with Bill and make sure that was legal, handing a permit out like that. That's after, we had that discussion, then I had the discussion with Bronson over here.
Okay.
And so Jeff said if he could have somebody send him a notification that he, and get it into him by tomorrow, then by the end of the week, he would have the permit.
And is that gonna be within the window of time for the state? Are they gonna be happy with that? Have we confirmed that with Shannon?
I'm not sure what their timeline is, um, when they need it by.
Well, I think it's Shannon who is, uh, running this, and, um, if she can see something by the end of the week.
So I think keeping her fully disclose, full, in full disclosure here, I think a phone call probably should be made to her to let her know that you, as, you know, the chairman of the select board has stepped in and is making, making sure that this gets done.
Yes, go on.
Yes.
Yeah. So that she gets some, 'cause I will tell you that I've seen a lot of emails from the state over the years, sitting here. That's the strongest email I've ever seen of a threatening nature that says, get your act together, or this is over.
Yeah, I get it.
And it's very clear to that effect, and she even says, uh, something to the effect of, the state is not going to be involved in-
This is all the emails.
Yeah, there's, there's a quote in there somewhere that says something to the effect of, the state's not gonna be involved in people's, people's egos, or something like that.
Because we have a lot of work to do, and I can't justify spending any more time playing games with someone's ego.
Right.
That's straight from the state.
Really?
Right.
That's, that's a quote. That's out of the email.
Right. And now, did you have any more confirmation or emails from Shannon?
Um-
After I left?
No, I just sent her the one, I'll try to figure this out best I can for the board's direction.
So I think I would touch base with her tomorrow and let her know that our understanding is the permit will be issued by the end of the week. And that permit should be scanned and emailed to her. It should not be just sent snail mail. It should be sent snail mail, but it should also be brought here. It should be, it should be scanned.
Now, what I was gonna suggest, if we want, we can give Jeff a call right now. And you have his phone, it's better- if I call him, I can't, I don't know how to put this on speaker.
So Mike, you relate to Bronson that he needed to write that decision?
Regardless, we had, we're past the 45 days, and Gail wrote to us someplace in here, that, uh, there's a 45-day thing.
It's deemed approved.
So-
That's the one you're looking for?
No. So, long story short, because my management side's gonna come out, so forgive me here if my manager side comes out. This is why we have people under us that we hire or appoint for these positions. So that ultimately, we don't have to deal with these issues.
Right.
Right.
Unless something happens. So what this tells me as a manager sitting here, somebody didn't do their job.
Somebody dropped the ball somewhere.
And I realize right now, we've got two people under us that are pointing fingers at each other and saying, no, he dropped the ball, no, he dropped the ball. And it's, and it's, and it's a he said, she said situation. Back and forth.
Right.
So basically, I, with the conversation with Bronson, ball's in Jeff's court now, to get the permit.
But, but at the same time, if you interviewed Jeff, Jeff would tell you that, no, the ball's in Bronson's court, and he hasn't done what he's supposed to do. So-
But here, let me, let me, this is December 13th, 2021, from Gail Akazi. Uh, Dear Michael, at the July 26th, 2021 Clarendon Planning Commission, a motion was passed unanimously to send a recommendation to the, uh, Clarendon Select Board to remove Jeff Beazusi, Clarendon Zoning Administrator, for cause, according to VSA Title 24, Section 4448. If Brian's technique, uh, technique fails, Brian's technique failed. The ZA has failed to issue a permit to the state of Vermont, even though the 45 days since the duly-worn hearing on September 20th, 2021, has passed. Respectfully submitted, Gail Akazi. So this is where I was gonna go tonight, with the zoning.
So, but, but here's the thing. Before we even go into, that's a separate issue. I realize that apparently it has to do with this decision. But the, the reality of that whole thing is, is a separate issue to me.
Yeah.
The, and, and not only that, if that was passed in July, to my knowledge, unless something came across that I did not see, we have not been, we have not formally been notified of that decision in July.
No, so this is the first mention?
Correct. So-
Because Brian tried me.
Failed.
Okay. So you made a decision in July to, to make the recommendation to remove, but you're notifying the select board on December 13th, right?
Yeah, 'cause I made sure with Gail, like, I didn't miss anything for me, right? She said, no, this is the first time we're letting the select board know. Because Brian was supposed to talk to him on the side, the ZA. And he, that failed.
Okay, so-
But still, yes, it's been like six months.
So here's, here's the way I see this order of events. We've just been notified of that tonight. You have a current zoning administrator that has to issue this decision, and is, and to my knowledge, is obligated by Vermont law to issue this decision. We would have to research that, but I'm pretty sure zoning administrator rules and statutes are pretty clear. If the BZA issues a permit, the zoning administrat, you know, they vote to do it, the zoning administrator has to issue it. So it's just like, you might have- So it's just like, you might have somebody underneath, so Heidi might disagree with the bill we vote to pay, and she can voice her opinion against it, but she's still by law is obligated to cut the check and issue it because we voted for it. So I think you're in a similar situation. So even if the zoning administrator is not in agreement with the decision, he still is obligated by law to issue the decision that the governing board passed.
Right.
So.
And then after having heard from three different individuals today, and I sat here with Katie going over this back and forth.
Yep.
And then finally having that discussion with Brian.
Yep.
Or Bronson, rather.
Yep.
My personal thing is that tonight, the select board, in my opinion, wants to notify Jeff to go ahead, issue that permit. Because this is why I read that letter, um, is because it was passed on.
In September.
Yes.
Yeah.
And this has not, he didn't get anything in writing or something. Bronson said he thought he did. He said, she said.
Which I don't, again, I don't care about the he said, she said, but, and I see this as a two-step process. That letter you just read, what we were just notified of tonight, my personal opinion is, and this is just me, I'm just one person. We read the letter. If we wanna have an executive session next meeting, let's get this issue resolved. And then, let's address that. That's, that's my, you gotta, you gotta take it in systematic order. Let's, you know, you may be moving in that direction, but let's get the.
Let's get a permit going.
Let's get the permit going because.
That's most of it.
Quite frankly, and maybe I'm, and this may be a question for Bill Blumer. If due to, how will I word this? If due to negligence of not issuing a decision, and there was significant retribution such as the state pulling this permit, and I'll word this carefully, what is the town's recourse for such negligence? Does that make sense?
And are you suggesting then to find out from Bill if we have the authority?
Is there recourse for neglect, if there is negligence that results in a significant loss of grant income that has been awarded and a project being pulled that's already approved to the tune of massive amount of money. I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars is my understanding. I don't know what the final award was, but significant amount of money. What is the town's recourse towards such a negligent individual? Is there a recourse that the town has against a negligent individual who doesn't fulfill their obligations by state statute?
Right, but my, my concern is, who is that individual? Is it the zoning administrator?
That would take more research.
Or is it the BZA leadership not getting a, a, a letter to the zoning administrator? So this is.
And I agree, and I agree. And I agree with you. It would depend on who ultimately was determined to be negligent in the case.
But bottom line is, here we have something from Gail Akazi who was.
You have documentation in hand.
Right, that that was passed. So my thinking is tonight, that the select board, we have the authority to say this was acted upon. Now zoning administrator, do your job.
Theoretically.
Right? So that's why I wanted, I wanted all of us, all five of us to weigh in on this.
But I mean, is everybody in agreement it should be taken systematically? You deal with one issue before you deal with the second?
Get the permit done.
Right. Because I'll tell you why. If you act on that letter tonight, you're never gonna get a permit.
Right. Well, I had a conversation with Jeff, and I did tell him that there's an individual in town who was, uh, looking to be our new zoning administrator. You and I, you and the board discussed this prior, and you said that you were considering retirement and stuff like this. He said, yes, if you have somebody else that's interested, I'd be willing to either help train them or just step down. He said that to me right here.
Do that later.
So, so again, let's get our permit issued first.
That's the first thing. Let's, let's get that done.
Make sure the permit's issued before that has to happen.
Yeah, so we don't lose, we don't lose that project. Let's get that done. The other issue we can take up at a later date.
Uh, I can give Jeff a call right now.
You wanna call him in or?
I personally don't see the point, but that's me.
At this point, I don't see it. I don't see much need to it.
Get it done. We can reach out to him tomorrow to get.
Well, I mean, the thing is, you've got the documentation in hand, the commitment has been made. So, I mean, I don't see anything wrong, even if you wanna copy all of us on an email first thing in the morning that says, the select board discussed this last night and is expecting a permit to be issued by Friday.
Uh, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
You and I are done over there. Stand by, Katie.
I mean, that's, to me, I mean, I, I don't know how much more forceful you can get. The select board discussed it last night. They have seen the documentation from the BZA and have documentation in possession that this was unanimously passed on September whatever. Rattle the date off and say that the select board is expecting a permit to be issued by Friday.
Yes.
End of story.
Yeah.
And, and you could even put on there, expecting it to be issued and to be copied on the permit to verify its status.
Yes, okay.
I mean.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So tomorrow.
You got a busy day tomorrow already.
Should be an awakening.
That's three things you gotta do.
Do I get a raise?
Yeah, we haven't discussed ours.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
We gotta be ten years behind.
Uh, so officially, we will wait to discuss a reappointment for the, yeah, at our next meeting.
Yeah, that's where you might even want to do your executive session.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. New business, uh, zoning fees. CES zoning fees? I have no what idea what that is.
That was, um, you brought that to my attention. It's about Clarendon Elementary's, I think they put up a shed or something. Everything had been donated. There's an email in there.
Is it required?
It's such a small thing.
They required a permit and there are fees, but the whole project had been pretty much free because everything was donated, so they wanted the zoning fee to be.
Oh, 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 for us to, tonight.
And Jeff said that's the select board question, whether the fee can.
So is there?
And what is, what the fee be?
I think it was around one fifty.
Yeah, it was ridiculous.
I included the email.
Sort of a charity thing, I think.
What was it for?
A shed.
Yeah. And they just wanna know if we could waive the fees.
What bothers me is, because they're a unified district.
Well, and so, alright, so you said it, so I'm gonna say it too. So, the treasurer just cut that school district a check for what size? Three million dollars, and you're gonna ask us for forgiveness of a hundred and fifty?
Fifty dollars, right. That's where I.
Are you kidding me?
Sign off on that. No.
I'll make the motion that the request for zoning abatement, whatever of fees, be denied.
I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead, Cash.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright.
Mr. Chairman, to save time, I will make a motion that the town of Clarendon does not institute a mask mandate.
I will second that. With the statement that, uh, educate, don't mandate.
Mm-hmm. Uh, in further discussion, as far as this one member of the board is concerned, the, the only big business or anything that we have here, other than the industrial park, and they have their own process over there, is the school. And the school board has already set up mandates, so I don't see.
Nothing wrong with it.
Why the, why the select board has to get involved with this. So, uh,
Stay right out of it.
At this point in time, I'd ask for, uh, the vote, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Looks like unanimous. Better roads grant.
How many people gotta sign it?
Just the chair.
Yeah, where the hell is it?
It's in there.
Um, I'll make a motion that, on behalf of the board, the chair signs the Better Roads Grant for two thousand, is this for twenty-two or twenty-one? It is twenty-two's, twenty-two's. What is it?
It's for next year's construction.
Yeah, so for twenty-two. Uh, I'm trying to see, hold on.
Total cost is twenty-four.
So that's a closeout for a grant.
This is an estimate.
Twenty-four seven ninety is the dollar amount?
Yeah, it's for Tier Road.
That's the estimate.
Oh, that's the estimate. Okay.
And I believe that.
And then there's another one here too, right?
Yeah, the whole thing is included. That's just the signature page.
So that's the signature page. So this is the Tier Road project?
Yeah.
Okay.
And going over that, I think you.
Technically, it's for twenty-three?
Who made that motion? Did you?
I made it, yeah. I was trying to see what year technically is, so that my motion has the right year in it.
Um.
I don't see it on here either.
I would think it's twenty-three.
Fiscal, it's, it must be fiscal twenty-three.
Cause they normally award them in April and then.
Oh, wait a minute, right here.
Wait, two, wasn't it?
No, I didn't get that.
No, we don't.
Says seek page six for more information. Uh, that's.
Well, let me word it this way, cause it's to be done in two thousand twenty-two. So I'm just gonna word it that we approve the project, Better Roads project, that will be completed in twenty twenty-two.
By the fall of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, and that way it covers it.
Alright. That's your new motion.
Well, amended, whatever.
Okay, amended motion.
I'll still second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And all I had to do is, had the board chair, once again, close trouble. Alright, cemetery bids. Here, I'll open up.
How many bids you have?
Just got two, apparently.
I included Joe Turner's thank you letter, just for y'all to sign.
Yes, we can do that under the end here.
What are those nights?
Okay, so I have Johnson's, which is our current. And their rates are, um, which we would need to check, probably Heidi will have to check it against what they're, what we're currently paying. The town hall, again, estimated at twenty mowings, thirty dollars a time. The.
My most recent bills are actually in that top bundle there.
Yeah.
Of Johnson?
Yeah, it's there. Yeah, I see it earlier.
You did see him?
Yeah.
I saw the Johnson thing, I did.
The total for the year that there, so, so July first, uh, is ten-nine.
I think that's what they did last year.
Hasn't changed. Total's ten-nine. Okay.
The total here is, uh, eight thousand seven hundred.
This one?
Additional trimming maintenance per hour would be fifty dollars, so.
This one's thirty dollars.
Yeah, so town hall would be forty, Clarendon Flats is forty, Smith Button is sixty, Marsh is forty-five. Um, West Clarendon is two hundred, Spafford is fifty dollars. So it's, uh, total is eight thousand seven hundred.
And that was it? Who was that?
Yeah.
That's, uh, intrinsic.
Inders, H?
Intrinsic?
That too.
They're keeping the same price.
Marsh is forty.
So they get the same amount of mowings?
They both cut the same amount.
Per contract?
Yeah.
Smith is button price sixty.
Yeah. So Johnson's kept their, kept their price the same?
Yeah, it stayed the same.
Spafford fifty.
Spafford is fifty, yeah.
And town hall, thirty.
Yeah, so their prices stayed the same.
Alright, but what's your total?
So their total's ten-nine, which was what it was this year. That's eighty-seven hundred. So, which I wanna check the math on that, I don't know.
It's about that difference.
Yeah, that sounds like quite a.
Forty.
Sounds like she went a little strong with Clarendon.
I don't know if the math's right, though.
The, the per time rate was the same.
Forty-five times twenty.
That's what I was saying. I know what you're saying, but I think intrinsic kind of been lower on one of them. Yeah, I was just thinking last year versus this year.
Just wanna do this math, I don't wanna make sure it's right.
Mm-hmm.
Plus. Yes. Yep, it is. So, uh, there is a difference. I mean, you're talking, you're not talking small potatoes, you're talking.
Twenty, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Twenty-two hundred dollar difference.
Yeah.
What's the hourly rate?
Their hourly rate is more, fifty dollars an hour, whereas.
Johnson's more?
Johnson's is thirty. Johnson's twenty, there's a twenty dollar an hour difference for hourly work.
Johnson's more.
Johnson's is less. Twenty, twenty dollars an hour less if you do hourly work.
Well, how can that?
Yeah, I don't see how to.
Don't sound right.
Their math may not be right.
We, we put in a tab of if they're gonna do additional work, what would their hourly rate be?
If you're gonna do additional labor.
Right.
The, the low bid is gonna charge us fifty dollars an hour for additional labor.
Right, right.
Johnson's is gonna charge us thirty dollars an hour for additional labor.
Now, is Johnson's math correct?
Yeah.
I was looking at the big picture of the.
Yep, it is.
Of the mowing itself.
You would think it would be higher if they charged a higher hourly rate.
It's, it is, I'm just telling you. I can double check this math over here, but.
Yeah.
For you.
Could be a difference.
Yeah, it's still that.
Twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-one hundred dollars to play with, and the extra hourly work. You've already paid the passage.
Another hundred hours. How much, how much extra work did they do, other than mowing for the extra pay? They didn't do a hundred hours, did they? Only about thirty hours, forty hours, weren't it?
About ten-nine.
Got scissors?
So you got eighty-seven, you got ten-nine. So it comes down to what you wanna, if you wanna, you know, it would be affected, your, your change is effective July one.
Right.
So if you're changing, um, if you're changing, you're changing, you're changing contractors July one.
Yeah.
So, but you're right, it's technically twenty-two hundred dollars savings.
Johnson's at about a thousand dollars this past year for us and.
Right, I guess it'll work? It's all gonna be a pretty close saving.
You're still, you're still gonna be.
No, it wouldn't be. A thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars.
About thirty dollars. I'm just trying to figure out the hours on that. That's thirty dollars. I'm just trying to figure out the hours on that.
Still for the same amount.
Be thirty-three hours.
Be seven to thousand bucks.
Thirty-three hours times fifty is fifteen hundred. So the long run, you're good.
You're still ahead.
You're still ahead. It was eighty-seven hundred. Is that right?
Yeah.
So you're gonna make a motion?
Huh?
You're gonna make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we go with, it was a hink site?
Intrinsic.
Intrinsic, for eighty-seven hundred for our fiscal year twenty-three, is that right?
For, yeah, fiscal, it'd be fiscal twenty-three. Yep.
There's a second?
There's a fifty-dollar addissue.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing follows in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there anything that has to be signed on it?
Uh, it didn't look like it. It just. Yeah, I was gonna say, the contractor.
No, that one goes into there.
That goes in over here.
And they understood that it was July one on. Okay. Okay.
Uh, do I write a thank you note to our other contractor or no?
Yep, I would say so.
I'm putting all this information in here, Katie.
Write out the porn raid, they're still doing it.
All right, there's a letter from the town to Joe for his work at Transfer Station. Uh, we are so grateful for your many years of employment at the town of Clarendon. You have been a wonderful asset to our team and you will be greatly missed. We hope to see your smiling face around town. Don't make yourself a stranger. We wish you the best retirement. Enjoy the life, or season of life and rest and relaxation. And if you find any extra time, take a couple of trips to Maine for us.
Um, Joey had been locked up.
Yeah, and it's the kindest regards, and we'll all sign it.
Motion to approve it and sign the thank you letter to Joe Turner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Press it this way. And. Heidi, you happen to have a report for us tonight?
I don't.
Did you have a good trip this weekend? Um, Katie, do you have any more information?
I don't. I think I'm off that tonight.
All right, Cash, you have any concerns?
Just that, whether, whatever we got coming on, everybody drive safe and watch the ice, and we'll do the best we can on following roads.
Good.
Take care of it.
No, I'm good. Except, uh, Merry Christmas to everyone and, uh, stay safe.
Uh, me too. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. We'll see everybody after Christmas, I think, is our next meeting.
Yeah. Merry Christmas all. Enjoy the holidays and festivities and football games and whatever, and the food.
All right, entertaining motion.
Someone will sing it?
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And to all a good night.